Good afternoon and welcome to the Merrimack Villas District Board of Commissioners meeting. Today's February 28th and we'll call the meeting to order at 5:01. Public participation is offered by webinar. Public can join the webinar by going to MVDwater.org, that is the MVD's website, and downloading the agenda for today's meeting. There's a web link on there or you can call 646-876-9923 and enter the webinar ID 812-609-83169. And as a courtesy, we have Merrimack TV is recording this meeting and will be posted at a later date on their website. So we can rise and have a pledge of allegiance at this time.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, so we have, we have more than a quorum of the board present in the room here. We have Wolf von Schon, one of the commissioners is joining us remotely. So I'll have Wolf just tell us where he's calling in from as a roll call, if you would.
Yeah, this is Wolf von Schen, I'm at a not-so-pleasant hotel in York, Pennsylvania.
Thanks for dialing in with us here, Wolf. Alright, I guess that's pretty much it for formality, as far as I can see. So we did have a the analysis of revenues and expenditures report were sent out this afternoon. Is Michelle not planning on going through those today, right now? Yeah.
Any questions?
Right. I didn't have a chance to even look at it because it was just emailed this afternoon, so I don't have any questions, but I don't know if anybody else had anything, had a chance to look at it, I know I haven't, so. I know it's a little tricky in the future, it's always best to get the information to us in Friday's packet because otherwise, you know, most of us won't have time to look at it a couple hours before the meeting. So alright, so we can get into the regular session.
That is actually a question I had, sorry to interrupt, but this has seemed to have become, this has seems to have become a habit here with the financials to come out like in the hours before the meeting. Is there any reason for that that we should be aware of, or is that just workload? You know, I mean, there would be a reason too, really.
It's a good question, I don't know the answer, but I agree with you, you know, it's I don't know if anybody has a
It was actually supposed to come out over the weekend, I was under the impression it was going to get sent out on Saturday, right?
Yeah, but even, even that, I mean, you know, we have ramped up staffing in that department, you know, and we still have overtime. Why, why is it a challenge to get this done during normal working hours before the weekend, so the commissioners are prepared?
Right.
So, and maybe that's something we just want to bring up on the, put on the agenda for the next meeting, but you know, maybe staffing isn't adequate and we have to talk about it, or something else is a hindrance and we have to talk about how we can help. But it's, it's not good for us to receive this frequently on, on the day of the meeting, or even the weekend, really, frankly.
I know other town boards, if you don't have the information in, you know, by days before the meeting, a week before the meeting, they just don't accept it, but this is our in-house stuff, so it's, it's a little bit different, obviously, but I still I agree with you, I'd like to know, hopefully this, this doesn't become more of a pattern that happens. And if we need to put more people on it or something, we should, we should know that, so.
I'm just curious, was there something going on we don't know about?
Well, obviously with the storm on Friday, Michelle had an appointment as well, she was working from home and I know she was having internet issues to get it out on Friday, so it was going to be the pressure to be out on Saturday, right, early.
Well, maybe the goal needs to be to have it out on Wednesday, right? I mean, those are monthly financials, there's no reason why they have to be done the day before the meeting, or the last workday before the meeting.
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to talk to Michelle on that, because I know there was some stuff she was waiting on for some bank stuff to get the final numbers in for the packet, so I could, but I agree, there probably should be a, maybe we need to have a cutoff date of Monday before or something, if it's, if it's possible.
Or another option too is if it is, you know, granted Friday was a snowstorm, but for instance, if the information that she's waiting for aligns with, with our meetings, maybe we maybe move the meetings to following week so that she gets it the week before. I mean, if, say for instance, bank statements or something like that, you know, there's a certain timeframe that they're coming out that's putting her in a situation where she needs to play, you know, fire
Information that by the time she needs it.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, that's just one thing. I mean, I grant, I understand this time around, January, January and February with the budget sessions and stuff like that, but yeah, it's, I agree with Wolf and Don in the sense that, you know, for us to have opportunity to look at the information, but if there's other apps, things are infringing on that, then we can adjust around it.
Right. I mean, I usually look it over and, you know, it's usually a half hour, that 20 minutes, a half hour to look it over and it just don't have that time in the middle of the workday, obviously, so. Alright, anyway, so let's follow up on that at the next meeting. So we just want to move forward on the first item on the regular session is the mixed-use development, the Flatley project. It was supposed to be with Kevin Walker, I don't know if he's on the line anywhere now or not, or if we can just proceed without him, but we are in receipt of a report from Underwood regarding the water demands on that project. So we do have, looks like we got Tom Page on the line here from Underwood, thanks for coming, Tom. I don't know if anybody has any questions on this, I definitely spend a lot of time looking through this and I've made some comments through here, so I don't know if maybe in the essence of time, if it's better to just have us ask questions, or do you guys want to have Tom kind of walk through the report at all, or what do you think?
Well, I pulled the number two because I really got lost, it's a little over my head. We can add a little
I can give a brief summary if you'd like.
I would find that up on
I do have one quick question, though. When it comes to the timeframe of development and the timeframe of our wells hopefully being fully operational. You know, because then we know whether or not we're going to be getting, paying Penachuck, or we supplying ourselves.
Right. I don't know if we have the ability to answer that, I think that's probably something that Kevin might answer, I don't know if he is planning to call in or something, hopefully we'll yeah, I think we're trying to get him now, but yeah, so Tom, why don't you just walk us through it at this point and, you know, we can ask questions maybe as we go through.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we've done several of these kind of development reviews, this is one of the bigger ones with Flatley, you know, probably the biggest one since the Merrimack Premium Outlets that's come on, but we do try to track all these and we're looking at a couple of things, we're looking at the hydraulics, the impact of, or the ability of your system to serve the proposed additional demands, domestic demands and fire flow and, and then the impact on your supply. So what that, the ability from your sources, and that's, that's probably the most, the most critical aspect of this. So we, you know, in this, we review, we look at, we look at what are the total potential demands of the of the mixed-use development and we look at, you know, every, annual average flow and peak flows and, and potential fire flow. And we, we add that to all the other potential demands that are out in the systems and, and kind of walk through in these, in these various tables, we're looking at what is the, what is the total potential demands on Merrimack's systems versus the capacity that you have now. And, and we also recognize that you have been managing a lot of your maximum day demands in the summer with some conservation measures, so. So it would be, I mean, clearly without conservation measures, you would, you would have challenges made, meeting these basic day demands, but you have, in reality, you've been able to manage them, so we do account for that in, in here and, and then, you know, the Penachuck source was also brought up and you're, you're making improvements to your treatment plants now and, and using the, you know, the Penachuck source to supplement in the, in the interim, so that's recognized too, and I you know, I'm not sure on the schedule for all this, but the, the assumption is that, that the, until the water treatment plants upgrades are fully operational, that you have the Penachuck source to, to supplement as needed until you're, you have your own supplies up to full capacity that you intend to have.
Right, yeah, so Tom, you probably know that right now, the Penachuck system, we are paying a reduced rate. We don't know what, it's going to be a final adjustment at some point, we don't know what that adjustment's going to be, so we're kind of in the blind a little bit on that right now. But when we're not on the reduced rate, after our last treatment plan is up and running in the fall of this year, we're going to be paying retail rate, as you probably are aware, which is quite a bit higher than the cost that we sell the water at, so. I had calculated, in the past, we're losing about $5,000 a day by buying a million gallons a day at Penachuck's retail rate. So I don't think anybody in this room considers that a sustainable method of supplying the makeup water. And then when you talk about conservation measures, you're really talking about banning irrigation or reducing irrigation. Right now, normal practice, as you're probably aware, is we're just doing odd even. So, you know, we have, we can only irrigate every other day essentially. Half of the town, or half the addresses, you know how that works, but when we go into a, an additional restriction on irrigation, we're talking about limiting that window to a three-hour period in the morning and then one in the afternoon or just once a day for three hours on odd even days, or an all-out ban, and, you know, that to me, I, I want our system to be able to have the source capacity to be able to allow our customers to irrigate in the summer when we're not in a drought, okay? I, I understand when we're in a drought, you know, all bets are off, really, but I think we're already sort of operating in a deficit and I made some notes in these tables as we go further down here that some of these tables assume, the calculation is based on having the ability to supply water at the approved withdrawal. But you also mentioned in the report, and I'm glad that you did, that basically none of our wells really pump at that approved withdrawal rate. You know, some of them vary to as much as 85% of that approved withdrawal. So that's more of a realistic number, and I think when you look at that 85% actual capacity, I think we're in a deficit the way we are right now. I don't think we have enough water to meet a 5 million gallon a day demand with our actual pumping rates, even if all of our wells are online. So I, I'm just, I'm just kind of presenting that because you know, again, in this report, it looked like we were kind of looking at average day flow, I know there's some peak flows in here, but um, I mean, I'll start with table one, one of the questions I had is that in that table one, it talks about an irrigation design average domestic flow for irrigation of what Flatley's proposing of 2,510 gallons per day. That is a small, that's just a small fraction of their overall potable demand that they're asking for. And so I ran some numbers and, you know, I'm in the, I'm in the field here of civil engineering and I know I've worked at, you know, landscape companies that are doing developments and what the, what the sprinkler guys always try to do is to hit one inch per week of irrigation water over the area that they're irrigating. So I backed out the number, the 2,510 gallons per day only allows for an irrigation area of .65 acres. So if you convert one inch per week over one acre, that number comes out to 3,879 gallons per day. And you convert, you know, weeks into days, gallons into cubic feet, the whole nine yards. So if, if they were going to irrigate one acre, they would need, they would need to, to they would need 3,879 gallons per day to do one acre. So the fact that they're only proposing 2,510 gallons per day due to proportion on that, that means they're only irrigating .65 acres. So I don't really know where the 2,510 comes from and I don't know how realistic two-thirds of an acre on two apartment buildings, three commercial flex building and a high bay building, I don't know how realistic .65 acres of irrigation area is. So maybe we can turn that question over to Kevin and, and ask him where the 2,510 gallons per day comes from?
How are you doing everyone? Kevin Walker, John Flatley Company.
Thanks, Kevin.
The irrigation that we do on the site, the apartments, I'll start there, are generally at the fronts where the, where there's landscaping. We have a little bit up at the front where the stone pillars are and I think we have a little bit in the island. Other than that, it's really just in the areas where there's landscaping, so you'll see it maybe a lot of the fronts of the clubhouse, the fronts of the buildings. We don't have any irrigation behind it. We don't have any irrigation on the side of the buildings. So, you know, I know it's a big site, but we're really not irrigating that much room. If we move to the flex site, there's even less room there. I threw in a number for the flex site and for the high bay site, warehouse site. I'm, I'm not even sure we're going to do any irrigation there, but I put a number in there just so it was accounted for in the event we do. The flex site, we're going to have, you know, a little 10 by 20 landscape areas by each, each of the doors on the flex area. Other than that, it's going to be paved. I doubt we're going to do any irrigation between the parking lot and DW, because it's naturally free. The high bay warehouse, same thing, you've got a parking lot, you've got some very limited landscaping at the front entrance, you've got nothing in the back because that's all paved. So again, you know, I threw a number in, throw a number in, but I'm not even sure we're going to do any irrigation out there for those two buildings. I accounted for something, just so there was something there.
Yeah, I think we asked you to do that last time, so I appreciate that, absolutely.
Yeah, so, I mean, we're, we're limited in the amount of the irrigation that we're doing out there, you know, this is based on discussions that you know, I had with Ron five years ago, six years ago, talking about that, the whole thing with the Sancho Bane situation and, and our challenges as it relates to both. So we, we really kind of, we get where you guys are, we're not trying to use more than more than we need to to make the site at least welcoming. But we're definitely not using a lot, there's not a whole lot going on out there irrigation-wise, and on top of that too, you know, the, the amount of, of water that we're using in the apartment buildings, and this is based on some flows that Jill had given me a few months ago. It's, it's just over half of what we assumed. So we're not, we're, you know, with these two apartment buildings, we would probably technically be covered under the number of gallons that we put forth in our initial development agreement for the five apartment buildings. Whether that goes anywhere or means anything to you, at the very least, I hope you understand that, you know, we're putting in conservation measures in the units. We're making sure our tenants are aware of different ways to use conservation measures to save water. Whether they abide by them or not, that's not for us to police, but we're, we're giving out the information to try to, you know, save as much you know, water waste, I guess I'll call it, that, that, that we're able to, and it seems to be based on the actual flows that we're seeing from these buildings. It seems to be working, you know, again, I think we, we projected X amount of gallons a day for each apartment building. And we're, I mean, I would say the very most on average, two, two-thirds of, two-thirds of that amount, that's probably less than that, so.
Do you know if, if those numbers were averaged over the entire year, or is that, because you know, this is the whole, this is the whole problem we're having is, when you look at the whole 365 days a year, everybody uses a fraction of what they think they're going to use, because it's averaged over 365 days. But the problem happens for three months in the summer where people are using two and a half times their average allocation for that short period. And that's when we're running out of water, that's, 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 that's why our system has to be built and we have to spend the capital investment to build a system that delivers 5 million gallons a day when we only need 5 million gallons a day for not even a month. And that, and that's, that's where the challenge is coming in here, because we have no way of enforcing what allocation, that you don't exceed the allocation. So, you know, I'm looking here, 13,920 gallons per day for the two family, the two multifamily apartments. But I don't know if you would be using double that in the summer and half that in the winter, so it averages at this number.
So I did, I did actually look at some summer numbers and and that was more to see what the difference was between domestic and irrigation use, that's how I came up with the irrigation number. So I don't have the exact number for the actual domestic use in my head, because I, again, I did it for the, to figure out the the irrigation number, but I've got no problem looking at that. But I'm, I'm telling you, when I did look at it, there were no numbers that said, you know, 9,000, you know, there was nothing like 9,000 gallons a day or even 8,000 gallons. I still think it was below this 7,000 gallons a day, even in the summertime, I can verify that with, with Ron and Tom, you know, this week or next, and just get those numbers and verify that, but
And that's probably based on quarterly, that's probably, you're talking about probably looking at quarterly meter readings, I don't know that
Yeah, quarterly, yeah.
Which is what MVD reads quarterly, so that, you know, so that's, that's a three-month span, so, you know, and I don't know if that straddles the summer or whatever, but I, I just, I just still, I think we're, we've been looking at this wrong in the past and I still think we're looking at this wrong by averaging the flows over the whole year and saying we have plenty of water for everybody when we have to go into an irrigation ban more than not, it seems like, in the last five years. And I know there are different reasons for that.
Do you want us to put a meter on, it can be read monthly, that way it's easy, easy enough to
I mean, it would be good to know, if, if you're willing to do that, at least we'd have some
We've got two buildings going up, I mean, we can, we can put in something, you know, we can put in a meter that we, we read monthly and give you the info, or we can put it in to you guys and come in and read it, however, however it works best for you guys. There's something that you guys are struggling for an answer for, I mean, I think the only way to get the answer is to is to have a meter that you can, you know, maybe not come out March 1st to, or, or May 1st or June 1st, maybe it's, you come out from you know, July 12th to August 12th, or whatever it might be, you know, what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
But we're, we're willing to help out with that.
Appreciate that, Wolf here, so, quick comment, I, I think we're caught a little bit in the, in the, in the, in the timing of us as, as a district looking into changing some of our position there, right? And you kind of facing a little bit of ambiguity there, right, because we're not, we're in between two, you know, two standards that we're trying to establish. In the past, we have only looked at the average consumption and we haven't really looked at, at the peak demand, right, or the peak consumption. And, and you're being held, held up in the middle of that, and I'm not sure if that's, you know, something that, that we can hold against you, so you working with us, it's greatly appreciated. The district has talked before, the, the board has talked before about possibly separating the metering of irrigation from, you know, let's say normal demand or consumption. But there were reasons back then where we haven't decided for that, at least at the time. So I think frankly, I'm not sure if we can hold you back in, in your decisions, right, and, and the approval, with maybe the exception that we, that we talk about, that, that we want to limit the peak demand in general, right? So I don't know what kind of options we have to, to give a conditional approval or, you know, to put any easements or something on the property, I'm not sure, I'm not a lawyer. But maybe this is one of those things where we can grant you the approval based on numbers that we know, as long as we have control over the peak demands in the future, if you know what I mean.
I, I don't think that's an issue on our end, and we're, I, I think you know, if we come close to what we show as the peak now, it's, like you said, it's probably one of those months in the summers, July or August, or somewhere in between. But, I mean, again, for the full year, we're well under it, I know that's not really the point, that the crunch time for you guys is the peak. I don't, I don't really see, I don't really see an issue with it, and we, we don't, you know, we're on a golf course, we're, we're not irrigating, you know, 100 acres of land, we're, we're irrigating, you know, maybe half an acre tops.
Well, if that's the case, I mean, I, I would feel comfortable if you were willing to accept you know, based on that calculation I did, your 2,510 gallons per day would be able to cover an area of .65 acres. And that would be the one inch per week that you talk to any irrigation consultant and they're going to tell you, that's the minimum you need, so. You know, if you're saying a half an acre and the calculations are pointing to .65 acres, then I'd be willing to put that in, in an agreement, and if you're willing to abide by that, I think that would, that would make me a lot more comfortable because I don't think you could irrigate more than 2,510 gallons per day over that small area anyway, that, that would just, that would be more water than you'd need over that area, really, so I, I'd feel better if you were able to agree to something like that.
So what we're likely to be irrigating is about the building width, a building length, I guess, which is about 210 feet by whatever we have for landscaping out front, which is, you know, five to 10 feet minus walkways, so whatever that 210 by, you know, maybe 2,000 square feet for two buildings.
Yeah, that's, that's tiny, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's why, that's why I'm saying, our numbers are not, you know, it's a big, that, that apartment site is not a tiny site, but the amount that we're irrigating is, is not, is not anything obscene.
Right, the issue, the issue that I see is, how is this enforceable, right? I mean, you know, the, the current property developer could, could sell the property, you know, three years from now, or 10 years from now. And, and how would, how would there be a record of, of the agreement under which the, the permit was given, right, so?
Why don't we put in the, why don't we put in the development agreement that it passes, you know, it passes, it passes on by land transfer, or whatever it might be.
Yeah, that's why I was talking about an easement of sorts, and I think frankly, at least I personally am not prepared to speak to that and decide on that. I think this is something where, you know, our superintendent should probably consult with legal and see what is the proper way to set such an agreement up.
Well, I don't know if you noticed, there is a draft agreement in the packet that talks about all of it, so, that could be something put in there.
Right, but what, what happens with that agreement, and, and you know, how does, how does, is that just going to be then on MVD record and MVD has to basically monitor and police it, or?
I think this needs to be recorded in the registry of deeds, so I'll tell you
That's what I'm thinking.
I've had a lot of meetings and stuff tonight. I've had a lot of meetings and stuff tonight. We, we've got a site in Nashua where a deal was made back in the day. Um, different owner, the land that John now owns, that we couldn't build anything taller than two stories on a certain portion of the land. And all the neighbors, we have sixty, it's like twelve pages of signatures of the neighbors that signed this thing. Wow. And it's recorded registry of deeds. Now, some of these neighbors obviously aren't around anymore, if any of them. But it's there, it's a registry of deeds, it's recorded, it runs with the land. And that kind of keeps us where we are. I mean, we, we can't go in there and propose a three-story building because, you know, we're restricted.
Yeah, I think you can make an agreement, be, you know, John Flatley and, and future assignees or something if the property. All right, I, I'd feel better about that personally. Um. All right, so, go ahead, Ron.
Do you know if, um. I believe you got separate irrigation meters for the other buildings? Or is it all?
So I will, will the question?
Kevin? Oh, irrigation meters, you know, are those separate, separate irrigation meters for the, for your other buildings?
I think the irrigation meters are tied in mostly, I think, I think it's tied into the clubhouse meter. We don't have a separate meter, if that's a question.
I think moving forward, we probably should have a separate meter for irrigation then as well.
So would that be consecutive meter? You're not gonna build two separate bills on two meters?
As it comes into the unit, it would branch off, one be domestic, one would be for, uh, irrigation, and we send it to Bill essentially, but. Yeah.
How much are those meters?
The tiered rates, it's domestic and irrigation combined together to, on that.
Could you put them consecutively? Um, and the irrigation meter after the split would be for informational purposes only?
Yeah, so that was. Yeah, I guess you could do it either way. Yeah.
I have no problem with that at all. I think that's fine.
It may help you on wastewater as well. That might be something you can, uh. You know, if you're flat rate over there as far as, are you doing a residential rate or is it a?
On your sewer bill?
I, I don't know. I thought, I, I think it's a commercial rate. I'd have to double check, Ron.
That may help you out, because you've pressed that off. Well, you, I don't wanna speak to the town. I don't know if that's still the case.
Everything in there is.
So, the other, the other thing, and I don't know if Tom has already mentioned this, the other thing that we're talking about on this entire site, this entire hundred and fifty acres. Is looping a twelve-inch main from the apartments all the way through the site. Up by the St. Obane driveway. Just to provide a secondary loop for, for you guys out there. Um, I don't know if that's something we can briefly talk about here, because I, I know there's a, a development going in across the street from us. Uh, self-storage facility, and I'm, obviously they're gonna have to come to you guys to get their water. I was wondering is. As part of their dealing with you. If they could put the twelve-inch line in from, because a twelve-inch line, the connecting line is on the opposite side of GW Highway. I was wondering if the other self-storage facility could put in the, the twelve-inch line and stub it. On the east side of GW Highway, and you would just connect to that.
Uh, the issue with that, Kevin, just speaking from my point of view, is that that has yet to be approved.
Right.
Um, in fact, it just keeps being continued, so I don't know if anybody else will feel comfortable making, I mean, that would be. I'm accusing myself in this discussion, but just to give you that, what he's talking about is that there's a proposed self-storage unit going in. Almost directly across the street from where he's talking about, and he wants them to put in.
That, is that correct, Kevin? You want them to, uh?
Yeah, we're just, you know, we're, we're, you know, we, we really only need to put an eight-inch line through our property. And we've spoken with Ron, we've spoken with Tom, and we've agreed, you know. For the purposes of, uh, you know, helping out with the, the water supply from pretty much everybody in the general area. That we're bumping that eight inch up to a twelve inch, and we're gonna put a twelve inch in versus an eight, so. You know, we're spending a little extra money on that, was, was, you know, we're spending a little bit extra money on the development charges. We're just looking for, you know, we're spending money on testing for St. Obane stuff, we're spending money for this, that, the other stuff, we're just. Just looking for some sort of, some sort of helping hand, just a little tiny one somewhere.
So you're, you're saying you want the, uh, the butter crust put in that main instead? Is that what you're trying to get at?
Not, not the whole main, just tap, tap it in on their side of the road and bring it across to our side of the road, and that's it.
And the only thing I'm saying is that.
We'll run the rest of the twelve inch all the way through from the St. Obane driveway all the way to the apartments.
What I'm saying is that the, the development he's talking about has not only not been approved by the board, but it's been changed already. It was originally gonna be a hotel, short stay thing, and then it changed to a self-storage, and then that just keeps being continued as well, so.
So in other words.
Wanna hang on to that.
In other words, it's still.
Definitely gonna happen, exactly. I see what you mean.
Yeah.
Just give a little bit more history, um. And Kevin, as you can re- recall, we, during the first, uh, phase. Um, we actually part, we wanted you to relay, um. Continue the sixteen-inch main up on the, uh, west side. And DOT at the time, I'm, I'm assuming it's still the same, didn't want, or would not allow us to run that. Main up the side of the road, um, uh, having mains in parallel, they wouldn't allow it. So we opted for a less ideal, um. Still worked for looping in a sense, I guess, is that sixteen. The connection from the sixteen to the twelve by a cross with Priscilla. But the intent from the original discussions was to get a. Uh, uh, a loop going from. Running up on the east side, uh, on your side of the, the road, for that loop. The, the water main is on that side, east side of GW. But it was, I guess, I, that was the initial, uh. Plan, what's to, to, you, you have more real estate on your side of the road than the other. So we would have, in order to, to, to run that main up the, the west side, we would get easements, we'd have to go back to existing. Um, properties.
You're saying the mains on the, the mains on our side of the road?
The main is on your side of the road.
Oh, well, I can't really ask somebody else to do that, then, I guess. All right, we'll forget what I said then. Sorry for wasting everyone's time.
So, um, I guess I'm not clear on exactly what you're looking for tonight, if this is just another update. I, I mean, I don't think. There, there's a lot here that's gonna take a lot more than the twenty minutes we had on the agenda that we were already into it for half an hour. So, I don't know what you're looking.
The, the approval for the wa- for the flow that, uh, that Tom has outlined for the, uh, apartments. The flex and the high bay warehouse, with the same understanding that we had before. That we'll put together a development agreement, uh, that'll obviously come before either the board again or, or, or Ron. Or both, and, uh. Except this time we'll record it, and we'll also add in there what we're talking about with the, uh. Uh, the irrigation meters, so you guys can get a, a read on those.
Yeah.
I'm looking, I guess right now we're just looking for the okay on the gallonage. With a condition that we continue to work on a development agreement to, you know, to, but again. Till it gets to a point where we can finally record it, which hopefully won't be more than a couple of weeks. And I think, I, I think I've got a good read on what you're looking for and, um, I'm on the same page with you a hundred percent, so.
Right. Um, from my perspective, I, I'm, I was looking over that, uh, development agreement in the back of the, um. Packet here that we got last week. There's definitely some items in there that I would like to. Review and address and have, you know, stricken in here that there's, uh. MBD has determined that no improvements to the system are required at this time. Um, that efficient water supply to the building shown on the site plan for the apartments flex, including irrigation. Is, uh, it's just stuff in here that I'm not comfortable, I, I. I'm not comfortable being able to say I agree with all of this, so I'd like to be able to see this agreement. In its final form, so that we know what we're approving. Um, I don't, I don't question the, the withdrawals, the numbers you're asking for, for the, um. You know, for the potable water, I, I, you know, if you, if you agree that the twenty-five hundred and ten gallons per day is sufficient for irrigation. Um, again, I'd like some way to, to make that, um, to prove that out. I think the easiest way that I can think of at this time is to, is to put a limit on the area that. You're allowed to irrigate out there. And, and I know that's hard to enforce, but at some point, that's tangible, it's in the ground. We can actually, if there's any, if there's any reason for us to believe that you're using too much water, we can go back and actually. Ask you to, to run your irrigation systems and we can measure. How much area is being irrigated, that's a tangible thing. You know, if we're talking about putting meters in and things in the future. To me, that's already water over the dam. If we give you this approval now. And it turns out you're, you know, the irrigation numbers in the future are different. I, I'd just rather have something more concrete at this point.
Can I make a suggestion on this? Because I don't know that we're gonna be able to get concrete numbers this time of year, right? So what if we have these irrigation meters? And anytime it goes over what you're proposing, you pay Pena Chuck's rate, that we have to pay Pena Chuck. That way we're covered to not have to pay more than we're receiving.
Right, right. I like that.
I, I think I'm all right with that. Are you guys okay that, with the development charges, that if we don't use as much water, then we can get some back?
It's an idea.
Kind of, kind of joking, not really.
All right, well, what do you wanna, what do you want? Do you wanna redline the, the contract and try to get to some final agreement on that?
Um, I, I think I, I personally need to look, you guys can vote on it if you want. I'm not prepared to vote on it in favor of this tonight, so.
That was, it wasn't in there, in my opinion, we didn't put that in to get, to get voted on for the, uh.
Right. I mean, I've got a bunch of, I got a bunch of questions on the, on the letter from Underwood that we're not gonna have time to go over. So that, that's gonna take time to flush that out, just for myself, so.
So I sleep better, because is there any chance that you could approve the gallonage at this point only, and then we'll come back in a month, I guess, when we meet next and. Get it finished up?
Um, I'm not sure what that means, approve the gallonage.
Yeah, like table. Basically table one, right? The phased water demands, phase two water demands?
Yeah. And the system development charges, that also.
I just curious, that timeframe, when would the, uh, expecting, uh, construction be completed? If everything went right, when would you expect to have the apartment buildings built?
If things go well, everybody can watch this, right, in Merrimack, right? So I'll talk about the planning board. Um, planning board process has taken a little longer than we expected. On everything, we're also having to deal with, uh, a couple other boards. The alteration of terrain bureau has been fine, but the fishing game portion of alteration terrain has been a disaster. They had our, they've had our flex buildings for almost eight months, just fishing game. We're not, we're not near a pond, we're not near a waterway, we're not near anything, but we finally just got that permit after eight months. Um, we're also dealing with DOT, so we're dealing with also DOT. So I mean, when these are done, my, our game plan is to do the flex building first. Uh, the second portion of it is probably going to be the high bay warehouse. And maybe we're doing the apartments at the same time, but the apartments are typically. You know, eight months or six, six to eight months, but, you know, till completion, depending on weather and is it gonna be done in the snow or, or what, but. Um, so we're still in front of the planning board for the apartments. We're hopefully gonna get approval in April on the apartments. Um, maybe big break round in May. And, you know, by the, the twenty twenty-three is my, is my guess for the first apartment building.
So, yeah, I would, me myself, I would feel better having an idea of how we're doing. Uh, with well, seven and eight, and well, two, uh, the timeframe with those will be operational, because that. Will give us a better understanding, uh, how much we're gonna have to rely on Pena Chuck. So I, I just, when it comes to, you know, I mean, is it something we could maybe vote on next month? Where you still have a ways to go for the, uh. gallons we're looking at?
Really? Yeah, the, the flex building is the most important one, because we're, we're ready to get going on that one. Um, and that's only a couple thousand gallons a day, and that's, that's, that's an absolute max.
I mean, I guess, as a compromise, I'd be willing to, to give you the approval on the flex buildings. I just think, I need, I need to look at this more before I can approve anything else tonight, I think.
Yep, I, I have no problem with that at all. I think we can wrap the whole thing up next month, honestly. I think we'll have everything, uh. You guys can redline the development agreement for the things that either you want or don't want, and, uh, we'll take a look at it, we'll box it back and forth and, uh. I, I don't really see any reason by the March meeting, I mean, by the, uh, yeah, the March meeting. That we're all, the whole bunch of us are all done with it.
And then the questions I have from the, the Underwood letter, I guess I could probably just do, I don't know if everybody wants to do a work session on it. Or if I can just do, just maybe call Tom and go over some of this to get a little bit more clarification on my own. And if there are still concerns out there, then maybe we hear them all together. It's kind of your, I mean, the last thing anyone has is time, so. I know how that's going.
The, the way, the way I see it is, we're at, we're in the process of. We're only really having these discussions because we don't have a new standard. Normally staff should be able to assess the situation with the engineers. And the, you know, the applicant, and then the board only should receive a proposal, right, with a, with a recommendations. We shouldn't really be, need to, we, we shouldn't need to be in a position where we do the engineer work ourselves as a board. Like you are doing right now, Don, and I agree with you doing that right now, because we don't have that standard. But if this were, if I were, were to, to suggest how to go forward is, um, we, if anything, we should have a work session. Together with the engineers and staff to develop that new standard, so we can put the guidelines and the metrics in front of everybody. Including the people that apply for these permits. So future applications have that calculation included in the first place, and it's a no-brainer. To, to, to approve it, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that does make sense.
So, yeah, we, we'd be happy to, to work with you on that.
Yeah, so I think, I think, like I said earlier, I think, uh, unfortunately for Tom, not for Tom, I'm sorry. Hard to see on my phone, um, the gentleman from, from, um, Flatley, um, sorry about that. Um, unfortunately, like I said, you, you, you're, you're kind of caught in the timing here, right? We have not finalized how we wanna go about doing this in the future. How do we determine, how do we determine peak demands and, and how do we make this part of the equation? So in that regard, Don, if you wanted to talk to Tom and maybe get, get, you know, some, some, some information. Without having to have a work session in that regard for this specific application, I think that's perfectly fine with me. But I do think we need to have a work session where we iron out the metrics for that, uh, approval process in the future. And as part of that, I would, I would like to have a discussion with legal. What is the best way in our uh, you know, interest of how to um, document any such agreements? Is that really the registry of deed, or do we need to talk about any, 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 any other ways, like an easement or whatever it might be, or is, isn't easement possible? So I do think we need to have a discussion with legal before we move forward with any agreement.
Right. I do, I do have a question for uh, Paul, the MPO, the Meramec Permian Outlet Agreement, is that attached to the site plan?
I don't believe so. I'd have to ask Thompson. Uh, I don't believe so, though.
It's just another way to carry.
Yeah.
I, I think Kevin's recommendation that's of putting it in the registry of deeds, because that follows the property. Any potential buyer is gonna have to do their homework and, and go to the registry and it's gonna be flagged. Here's a uh, a deed restriction that goes with the property. And so that way, it's gonna be, because otherwise, there's no way it's gone. It's after that, you know, it's gonna get lost. No one's gonna, we're not gonna be able to enforce it. We, that's not really, we don't have the staff and the time to do that.
You'll have it in your files too, you know, part of, even this approval process, you know, maybe that we need to give you a book and page number once it's recorded. That way, you've got a record of it, and then you've got a copy of it, and you know, this property ever comes up a hundred years from now, somebody, the MBD can you know, look on this parcel and, you know, boom, there it is.
So uh, so for the three commercial flex buildings, you got a number in here, twenty-three forty-four gallons per day. Where, where did that come from? I don't know if you or Tom might be able to explain that.
Yeah, I believe Kevin, you gave us um, some estimates based on uh, similar facilities and, and um, to that, and that's, so that's based on uh, actual experience elsewhere.
Yeah, that, that's correct, yeah. That's similar buildings, not in Meramec and other communities. And uh, we pulled up uh, the three years of water, above water usage records and took the highest one.
Did you actually see the background data, Tom, or are you just looking at the number that's put forth here? Like, were you, were you able to confirm the twenty-three forty-four gallons per day?
Yeah, honestly, it's, it's been a while, so I, I, I can't remember exactly what we looked at, but I think um, um, you know, it's based on information from that, that Kevin and Flatley provided. And, and uh, you know, it's understood, these are not wet facilities, right? They're not like a, a restaurant or some kind of pro facility using, consuming water to produce something.
Right, yeah, they're just basically little, little warehouses.
Yeah, I mean, uh, you, you know, honestly, it's hard to, hard to say without, without knowing the nature of what, exactly what, what is going in here. But, but I would suggest you have something in your development agreement, so should, should there be an increased demand over what is approved, then then, then, you know, obviously that has to go back and be revisited, so.
Right.
Yeah, I, I agree with that too. We've actually did this, I think, as I mentioned earlier, that in Nashville, we have flex buildings, one of them, one would be a brewery, took up a whole, an entire flex building. And so it's one big building instead of pods, and obviously the use for a restaurant slash brewery is gonna be a, a lot, a lot more than a warehouse, so we did have to go back and uh, uh, the one we did in Nashville and uh, get some stuff revised on that one.
Go ahead, Wolf.
Ron, thank you. Ron, how do we, how do we monitor like maximum usage over what is being permitted for a property? Is our billing system, do we have the ability to put like a limit on the account or something, or on the property address, and, and the system flags us if somebody's exceeding the permit, permitted volume, or do we have any other metric, any, any means to not, to monitor this use?
Now, it, it will, well, we're changing over, so there might be a more uh, more stuff that might be available for tracking, but right now, if, if it's, if the use is and I don't know what the parameter is, you know, if it's a, a larger use, it does kind of flag it before billing, and then we can take a look at it. So if the usage is up there, it is uh, there is a, a, a usage report that comes out, or billing report that comes out quarterly, or for the, for the route that's being read, that will uh, that we prefer to look at.
Okay, maybe if I wanna, if I can propose two action items to be added to the, to the, to the list of action items. One of them is being to organize a work session, right, to, to discuss the, the, the new metrics for, for permitting based on peak consumption, not, not average consumption. And the other one would be to talk about monitoring of uh, overall consumption versus permitted consumption. Unless anybody disagrees on the board.
Oh, that sounds good. But I'm not aware that we're like, whenever the development gets approved for an allocation by MBD, that number, does that go in a computer system that gets compared to consumption? It doesn't. So we're not really comparing anything. We're not enforcing any of this. That's my point, is that, that's why I think Wolf, that's, that's what we wanna look at.
And we might be able to flag that going forward. We haven't had that ability in the past, so not, so which, really what we're looking at, or what the system looks at is the normal usage, or whatever's been
In the past.
Right, and then anything that's out of sight, then it kind of gives us that flag.
So if there's an anomaly with the, you've been using water consistently, and then there's some kind of anomaly, it flags it, which is probably a leak. So it's, it's a way to detect excessive water like that, right? Yeah, which is good, but I think Wolf's talking about a different, different metric there, so. All right, well, I, I'm not sure. I don't know if we can give you anything tonight, really, Kevin, as far as uh, an okay on any of this, I'm not sure if I, I really don't know where the, the twenty-four, the twenty-three forty-four number comes from. I, I'm not sure that that's been, you know, somebody needs to look at the water records from where those numbers came from and confirm all that, and I don't know that, that Tom did that, so I don't know if there's a level of comfort here that we have, that these numbers are really good. At least not in my perspective. But if anybody else has any other comments or wanna make a motion, feel free.
Oh, I agree. I think there's some more, some more work to be done.
Any chance of getting a conditional approval, with the condition being that uh, the numbers are verified prior to the next meeting, and a development agreement is to put this put together?
I guess I'd be willing to do that. I mean, if it's proven that it's off, then.
Yeah, if it's not approved, right.
Yeah, yeah. If, if that, if that's strong enough for what you're looking for.
It's gonna have to be, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get out, get out with something in my pocket that I can uh,
Right.
Get to our contractor and whatnot.
Well, I think we can permit or approve the, the um, you know, based on the average consumption, right, on the average rate. I don't think we have a concern there. Our issue is the peak rate, peak consumption, not peak rate.
That's true.
So, yeah. I would have no concern approving, um, yeah, based on the current average rate being basically the peak rate, right?
Yeah.
And, and again, I'm just looking for the flex at this point. I've got, I've got a little more time left for the, you know, maybe another month or the, or two for the warehouse, and probably, you know, longer, longer than that for the, where apartments.
But I think we don't wanna hold anybody up, but, I'm sorry.
Right. So I guess we're asking for a, a motion to approve the average design, the design average domestic flow for the three commercial flex buildings of twenty-three hundred and forty-four gallons per day. Um, and that's contingent on um, that number being confirmed before our next meeting in March. Not that I'm making, I'm just, I'm just suggesting the motion, I'm not making it.
That's a good question. Are we actually just gonna have a meeting in March? Because we have the, isn't, we have?
Yeah, we have it the week before.
Oh, yeah. All right, I just wanted to make sure.
Right, right.
Think about it for a minute, because I'm thinking it's gonna be like, a meeting like this, recess, but it's not.
Yeah. So I don't know. Does anybody wanna make that motion, or are we more information first?
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion by Wolf.
Can I just get some clarification as to what what we're doing here? If, if we make this vote, it's conditional, is it then binding? Like, how does it relate to the actual agreement? Like, what, what are we, like?
Well, it's contingent on this number being proven. Because right now, it's
So what if it is, then we have to move to this, and, and, and the actual agreement, doesn't have to be some kind of agreement in place for that to be binding? I don't know. What, what exactly would the vote get?
I, I don't know.
It would get me to move forward with the planning board.
Positive outlook, and he wants to be able to take something to the planning board.
Right. Kind of holding up the process of the three flex buildings with the planning board right now. But they're looking for us to say that we have enough water.
At the end of the day, we still have plenty of time to negotiate the final grade.
Yeah, because the rest of these developments are not included in this motion. He's got two more uh, multifamily apartments in a high bay building that's being considered in front of us tonight besides the three flex buildings. So he's asking us just for the three flex buildings. Seems to be on the critical path more than the other developments.
How far down the road is the retail, Kevin?
Sorry, what was the question?
I see plans for retail in here, but I don't see them in the chart. Is that way further down the road?
So, so we're actually in the site plan uh, design process now. Uh, we're putting together two um, again, they're kind of gonna be like pods, two little retail pods and a small restaurant. Um, we're not ready to come in front of you yet, because we don't know, we don't know who's moving and where the retail we are, but we're, we're so early in the design process at this point, um, but I don't think it'd be fair to come to you guys at, at this point in the design process, uh, because the numbers could, could really change.
That phase hasn't even been introduced to the board at all, so that's so far off, he hasn't been drawing.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought, but I just wanna confirm that we weren't missing something there, because I didn't see that piece of the plan in here, so.
All right, so there's a motion on the table by Wolf. And I, I'll second that motion.
Well, let's clarify the motion quick. So uh, my intent of the motion was to grant a preliminary maybe, maybe it's rather a, a, an, an intent of, you know, of approval, an preliminary intent of approval, it's not an actual approval. It's a signal to the planning board and to Flatley that we are um, you know, not opposed to this, to this development and to this build um, as long as we have the peak demands clarified and covered in the final permit, right? So I don't know if that's enough for you, Kevin, or, or if you need to go on that.
I mean, if that's all, if that's what you're comfortable with, then, I mean, I'm not gonna ask you.
Yeah. Because John has a point, we're not really, you know, we're not really doing a temporary approval of any kind of agreement that is right now redlined, that, that it needs to be redlined. For that, that doesn't make sense, right? So yes, he's got a point there for sure. So basically, a, a motion to, to, to uh, to show that the board is in general uh, supporting the permit for the average rate as proposed right now. I think that, that is something I'm comfortable moving. And uh, and that basically just means that we need to have the peak demand covered in the end, yet, or clarify it.
And that's just for the three commercial flex buildings at this time?
That's correct.
Right. All right, so a motion by Wolf, second by me, a call of folks, we have to move on to public uh, hearings. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Wolf?
Well, yeah, I was gonna say we need to do a roll call for me. Yes, uh, in favor.
So that's four in favor, Paul's abstaining.
Extention.
So four, zero, one with, with Paul abstaining. Uh, so hopefully that's, it's enough for you at this point, Kevin, I know.
I'll, like I said, I'll work with Ron and Tom over the next uh, couple weeks, and hopefully get uh, a lot of that ironed out. If you guys can mark up the development agreements with stuff that you are, are wanna see or don't wanna see, we'll make sure that's added in or taken out, and hopefully get this thing all banged up by uh, you know, next meeting in March.
Okay. And I think that's probably, that's probably all we got time to cover, Tom, tonight. I know there's some other agenda items on here, but um, if you want, I don't know if we, if you wanna hang out, maybe we can get through this two public hearing items that we need to review right now, because they were scheduled for six o'clock, so we gotta get through them, and then we gotta recess at six thirty, so I'm not sure, we might have a little bit of time for the last five or 10 minutes.
But yeah, if you, if you'd like me to hang on for other, more discussion, I'm happy to, whatever.
So are you um, are you planning, you, you are gonna be discussing the ongoing projects?
No.
All right, so probably, probably doesn't, I don't think, I thought that was what you were covering, because I didn't see anybody else from, from Underwood on here.
No, I'm, I'm not aware of any, anyone else who's planning to be on to, tonight from us, but uh.
All right, then I guess that's probably good, then we'll, uh, we'll follow up with you and try to get a work session, or I'll, maybe just you and I will go over. I'll send you my comments I have on, on your letter, and then maybe we can just have a quick uh, half hour phone call.
Yeah, that'd be great.
A week or two, and, you know, and then I can get my answers, questions answered hopefully, so why don't we just leave it at that?
Okay, sounds good, sounds good.
All right.
Bye, thanks guys, we'll see ya.
All right, great, so um, at this time, I will uh, open a public hearing. Uh, this is for the uh, PFAS what's RLF? Mediation Loan Fund, uh, and this is for a grant in the amount of three million, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. So at this time, I declare the public hearing relative to the Meramec Village District acceptance of grant money for the new New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services PFAS remediation grant fund for Wells two, three, seven, and eight in the amount of three million, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, open for comments. The notice of this public hearing was posted on the Meramec Village District website, www.mbdwater.org uh, at the town of uh, Town Hall, Meramec Town Hall, the Meramec Public Library, and the post office. The purpose of this hearing is to allow comments from the public in relation to the acceptance of the grant funds. Prior to the public comment period, staff will present and explain the purpose of the grant. During and after this presentation, the public may ask questions, request clarifications, and/or com, offer comments for the board's consideration. When all public comments have been received, that will close the public hearing, and the board will go into, to session to consider action on the acceptance of the grant funds. There any questions uh, on the procedure? I don't know if we can tell if there's anybody in the public on the Zoom call right now.
No, it's attendees.
So there's nobody listed, okay. All right, so um, do you wanna go ahead and speak to this?
Yeah.
Great.
So we applied for um, best remediation loan funding. And we're going back and forth on how they were going to divide it up as far as grants go, and we ended up, uh, we're gonna refinance basically at the same or lower rate for the loan for only nine million, only nine million, two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, twenty, two hundred and nineteen hundred thousand dollars, twenty-four. So nine-two-one-nine-oh-two-four is what we're gonna refinance the loan to, and then they're giving, they're offering us a So, nine, two, one, nine, oh, two, four, is what we're gonna refinance the loan to, and then they're giving, they're offering us that three million dollar plus green. And so this is the public hearing that, um, were accept or reject, and then opposed to governor council, then it, once it's approved, then there's disbursement. So there's still more process, the governor council wants to know that it was serious about accepting it.
Sure, and when did you, when did you apply for this, is this a long time ago, or was this?
It's all the time, it's just, um, whether we qualify or not.
Right.
That was in July.
Oh, so it was quite a while ago.
Yeah. Figure out the accounting end of it as well, because we do have grants loans. Other grants and loans too, but.
And how'd you become aware of that, is that something that DES called us on, or, um, did you find that, or?
Yes, saying that this is what's coming up, and they actually called, Amy called me directly, said this is coming down, I get, uh, we need to get our application as soon as possible.
Sammy Russo at, um, DES, and, and this is in addition to the drinking water groundwater trust fund grant that we got. Couple years ago, which was in the amount of what, three million, some? Uh, I thought we got about a three million in the drinking water groundwater trust fund. Oh. Okay. So, that's just coming off of the fourteen point nine million dollar, um, warrant articles that were passed in. Twenty nineteen, so, that's great, you know, that's, that's a, that's a great thing for our customers. Alright, anybody, uh, have any other questions on that, appreciate you guys sticking with that and following up on it, that's, that's awesome. Any other questions on that at all, or?
No ramifications, right, it's just, do we want the money?
Yep, okay, yeah.
Alright, I'm good, exactly.
Yeah, great job.
I was just about to, yeah, I was just about to say, and ask the same question, there's no ramifications that go with it, right, as far as, I don't know.
No strings.
Are there, no strings.
They just want, and they wanna, they're gonna actually pay that out first, because they wanna disperse as much grant money as they can about that.
That's good to me.
Alright, let me, um.
So we're the SRF grant now, so we're already, so we converted the loans over to the best remediation. Loan fund.
We're in the process.
We're in the process, but they're dispersing that percentage wise across the board, because. They're not paying that grant out at a hundred percent, that SRF grant, it's, that's equal across, this would be.
Straight re-earned.
Right off, yeah, we'll be, we'll get that right out.
Whatever we don't, you don't, and then the loan amount, if we don't use, you know, that loan amount, we don't.
Yeah, hoping this allows us to reduce our loan amount, our principal, interest, and all that, right?
Yeah, yeah, we're going from, uh, twelve, twelve and a half million to nine million.
Alright, um, so. Again, I just gotta ask, if there's any questions from the public, any questions from the press, I don't see any. So seeing no further questions, I declare this public hearing closed. Uh, the board of commissioners will reopen the session of Merrimack Village District upon conclusion of all public hearings for the evening. So, that being said, I think, do we need a motion to accept this? This grant?
To accept the grant.
Second it. That's in the amount of three million, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars from the PFAS remediation grant fund. For Wells two, three, seven, and eight. Motion by John, second by Ken. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll, uh, take the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Wolf, how do you vote?
In favor.
Right, so that's five, zero, zero, everybody in favor. Um, so now we can move on to the second of our two public hearings in this room tonight. Um, so I declare the public hearing relative to the Merrimack Village District acceptance of grant money from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. Two thousand twenty-two local source water protection grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, open for public comments. The notice of this public hearing was posted on Merrimack Village District website, www.nbdwater.org, the Merrimack Town Hall. Public Library and Post Office, purpose of the hearing is to allow comments from the public in relation to the acceptance of grant funds. Prior to the public comment period, staff will present and explain the purpose of the grant during and after this presentation, the public may ask questions. Request clarification and/or offer comments to the board's consideration. When all comments have been received, I'll close the public hearing, the board will go into session and consider action on the acceptance of grant funds. There any questions about this procedure? Seeing none. Uh, then, uh, staff can go ahead and present and explain the purpose of this grant for twenty-five thousand dollars from the source water protection. Grant.
This is the twenty twenty, they do the local source water protection grants yearly, um, this one. The most that you could request is twenty-five thousand dollars, we were, we're being offered that. Um, total, this is for the signage around the wellhead protection areas, that Jamie got a bid of forty-three thousand. Ninety-four dollars for, um, about a hundred signs, and that's just, we wanted to make sure that we had enough replacements and all that too. So Jamie did a, a nice write-up about it, we submitted them, and we're at the same spot where we need approval to go to governor and council. We, we're commitment, we're already get governor council. So there's just a form they got, that the chairman will sign for each one of those.
Okay, and these are, these are signs that are gonna be going up in our wellhead protection areas that notify people that. We're in a wellhead protection area, and hopefully we'll say things about the amount of salt and restrictions, or is that part of this, or not?
It'll, uh. I don't know if it'll say restrictions, but it'll delineate, you know, make people more aware of where the wellhead protection area is. Okay, then if we choose maybe do it outside below it, you know. Uh, so, the salt area, that was gonna be the introduction town, if there's a, no salt area for them.
Okay. So in any event, we're already over the twenty-five thousand dollar grant, so if we tack on other signage, it's just more coming out of. Our own funds, basically.
But we didn't, I don't believe we've chosen a, so we didn't order any sign. So we can, we can take a look at the, the verbiage on the, the verbiage on the side.
Alright, so does anybody wanna make any motion to approve the twenty-five thousand dollar, um, grant? From the Department of Environmental Services twenty twenty-two local source water protection grant funding.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by John, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Wolf, how do you vote?
In favor.
In favor, so again, that is a five, zero, zero in favor, and, um. I technically forgot to ask questions from the press and public, there's nobody here, so I will. Declare the public hearing closed, and, uh, the board of commissioners now can reopen the regular session. Okay. Um, so back to the, uh, regular session agenda. Uh, the next item on here was a, um, in, receive an update from Underwood Engineers for ongoing projects, but I'm assuming Ron is gonna cut that.
Wanted to skip that for now, go right to the.
Oh, yeah, then I have to do that, yeah, that's a good point, okay. Yes, since we're gonna be at that public hearing at seven o'clock, we should probably. Have that in front of us, so, um, everybody can pull out their, um. Warrant articles. I think what we're gonna be doing here is just assigning. Who is going to be reading off these warrant articles at the. Public hearing at seven o'clock at the high school, correct?
So, yeah, I mean, we can do that as well, but I think you want more so for the annual meeting. Somebody that's gonna, uh, that will move the article, and you'll be somebody to second it, so you'll be two names on each one, first one, moving it, we'll read. The, uh. So the moderator should read the warrant article itself at the annual meeting, right, the warrant article, and then the, uh, write-up would be the board member would read.
Alright, so the first article is, uh, to choose commissioners for a three-year term, I don't think, there's no voting required for that. Article two is to choose a moderator for two years. Article three is, uh, see if Merrimack Village District can appropriate four million, eight hundred. Eleven thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars for general municipal operations for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year. Said some to come from water-related charges. Uh, this article doesn't, does not include appropriations contained in special or individual articles addressed separately. So, we just basically need to cover who wants to make the motion to approve, and who wants to second.
Right.
Right now.
Yep, and I, and I would go with, if the board chooses whoever. Which is to move it, would read it tonight, that's how you wanna.
Okay.
These are all standard articles that we have every year, right?
Yeah, we don't really. Standard, we don't really change it. We know our votes change, but.
Yeah, so somebody wanted to, uh, move and read that article at tonight's hearing and at the annual meeting?
Sure, am I moving it tonight, or moving it next month?
You'll read it tonight.
Read it tonight.
Yeah, and the board will vote after the meeting to put it to the ballot, so, but, okay.
Yeah. Oh, we don't vote there, in the meeting?
I think we vote af, we vote after the public.
Back in session, right, right, and then you'll move the ballot, move this to the ballot.
Okay.
During the, during the pub, the. The annual meeting, the moderator will read the article, it'll get the, you'll move it to the floor. You'll read the, the, uh, description under it, and then, uh, or speak to the article, somebody will second it, to be moved, to be voted on. Tonight, it's just a reading, just a.
Yeah, just coming today.
Yeah. Cause then I.
Come and just read it, and.
Somebody reading articles wanting to?
I could do those.
I don't think we need to read articles wanting to, because they're just offices.
Yeah.
But I mean, I thought last year we voted on them tonight, because come, yeah, because meeting, we have the recommendation of the commissioners. Already printed up.
Don't, I agree.
Vote on it tonight.
Yeah.
We already have, um, if it's four, zero, zero, five, zero, zero, we have, so we have to sign them tonight, right after the, uh, public hearing.
Gotcha.
So Wolf, you're not gonna be at that meeting, so I don't think you can participate in any of the, the moving and the seconds, right?
Yeah, you mean during the hearing, yeah, yeah, no, I won't, that's right.
So this is basically gonna, we gotta square this up with just the four of us here for, for this, okay. Just making sure we don't get into a situation that we can't undo, if, you know what I mean? Alright, so John's gonna, uh, John's gonna move that and speak to that, do we, do we wanna listen, list the second at this moment, at this point?
You know what, it's, actually, we, I, we have another meeting in between, so we could actually do the seconds later if you want. At our regular board meeting.
Why do we, I just don't understand why we need to do the second anyways. Cause it's really for the next meeting, so we're just gonna, we're just gonna vote on it tonight, because these are already articles, so.
Yeah, I'll just, to get them done ahead of time, we'd have the seconds already there, but if you wanna address it at the next meeting, there isn't, there isn't a meeting before the annual meeting, so.
Yeah, me too. I, I think you're making this, uh, more difficult, I mean, we read the articles, we vote on it, uh, our opinions tonight. And then the next meeting, they vote.
John's gonna assign anyone, if you don't pick your one.
You're just putting one name down.
I guess so.
Yeah.
So I'll do, I'll do article four, you do article five, how's that, let's just do this.
Awesome.
Ken, you're coming up for article six. And, uh, we got one more article, seven to go.
Mics here? Like the, the microphones?
Yeah, yeah. You wanna do seven?
I have one vocal cord, that's why I'm asking, okay, I cannot project.
No, you're right, yeah, no, I agree. My understanding is we will need to vote to move these to the ballot tonight, you're gonna need someone to move, and you're gonna need someone to second.
So are we, we're just reading it to the public and then see if there's any commentary on it, right?
Yes, so the only question I had was article five, we had talked before last meeting about whether the hundred thousand dollars is. We need that hundred thousand dollars to, to replenish the, uh. What is it, non-capital reserve fund?
I.
Urgency water and operations and maintenance of GAC treatment?
I wouldn't have it in there, because, um.
Hey.
I did speak with Amy Russo today as well, um, regarding. Potential funding for, for, and check, water that we're.
Yeah.
There's no additional loans, or. Grants, so basically, we come off the grant, it was just, just approved tonight, so it would be less that, less whatever, whatever dollar amount is. We paid the penalty charge, would come off of that, so it's, it, there's no new money out there in, in that.
Oh. So when you and I had the Zoom meeting with Mike Wimsat and Brandon, they said there's all kinds of grant money for this. Water, the cost of the water that you're gonna be buying for the next year.
Yep.
We just got that in the three point three million dollars.
Yes.
That covers.
That's, that's.
Which, which, I'm not complaining, but.
So, Underwood did talk to him a while back, and she was kinda like, oh, I didn't think you were gonna do that, because it didn't seem like it was worth it, because technically. Pay for penalty check and fix our loans, actually, dollar amount goes up by that amount. If you see if you're subtracting off that three point three, so, it doesn't make sense to, to go there.
So we can't go back to the well, for more, we certainly, well.
It would come off that, come out of that three point three, we can certainly, if we, if we need to, we can go that route. But. There's no new money, I guess, out of that, the fifth test, we should, but I can still look for some other ones, but.
So basically, to summarize, is it safe to say that, that three point three million dollar grant that we're accepting tonight? Is going to, if we won't choose, it would have to be applied, some of that would be applied to the penalty check.
Yes, it would be considered under that project.
Right, so we, they wouldn't know, they wouldn't approve an additional grant for the penalty check. Uh, bills that we're paying now.
Right.
Alright. I'd be willing to take a three point three million dollar grant over a hundred thousand and something. Grant.
Yeah.
So, I guess that makes sense.
Yeah.
Alright. Yeah, so at this point, um, I think what I, what we are going to do is to, uh. Uh, recess this meeting. Um, at, uh, six twenty-eight or so, is it? Six twenty-nine, gonna recess this meeting, and we will reconvene this meeting at seven o'clock. For the public hearing for the budget and warrant articles, um, at the Merrimack High School. Good evening, Merrimack, this is the, uh, meeting of the Merrimack Village District, uh, we are reconvening a meeting from earlier this evening. The purpose we're here is for a public hearing on the, um. Uh, the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, uh, operating budget and warrant articles. Uh, so at this point, I will declare the public hearing relative to the Merrimack Village District proposed operating budget for twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three. And warrant articles for twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three, open for comments. The notice of this public hearing was advertised in the National Telegraph and appeared in the February sixteen through eighteen, twenty twenty-two. Online editions, and the February nineteen, twenty twenty-two printed edition. The public hearing notice was also posted on the Merrimack Village District website at www.nbdwater.org. At the MVD office. at the MVD office, at the Merrimack Town Hall, and at the post office. Purpose of this hearing is to allow comments from the public in relation to the proposed twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three operating budget and warrant articles. When all comments have been received, I will close the public hearing, the board will go into session to consider action on the proposed twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget and warrant articles. There any questions about this procedure? Uh, seeing none, um, then we will have, um, each commissioner responsible for reading, um, the different articles. The first two articles deal with, article one is to elect, uh, one commissioner for a three-year term. Article two is to elect a district moderator for a two-year term. Uh, so article three, John?
Article three, to see if Merrimack Village District will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four million, eight hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars for general municipal operations for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year, with a sum to come from water-related charges. This article does not include appropriations contained in a special or individual articles addressed separately.
Great. Anybody have any questions of article three? Seeing none, we'll move to article four. Shall the Merrimack Village District vote to establish a contingency fund pursuant to RSA fifty-two colon four dash A by raising and appropriating the amount of twenty thousand dollars to meet the cost of unanticipated expenses that may arise during the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-twenty-three, with said funds to come from water-related charges? Anybody have any questions or comments? Seeing none, move to article three, Paul? I'm sorry, five?
Shall the Merrimack Village District vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars to add to the district's non-capital reserve fund under provisions of RSA thirty-five colon one dash C for the purpose of emergency water and or the operations and maintenance of GAC treatment facilities? This sum to come from unassigned fund balance.
Anybody have any questions or comments on article five? Seeing none, moving on to article six, Ken?
Shall the Merrimack Village District vote to raise the appropriate sum of two hundred thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars under provision of RSA thirty-five colon one, comma, one, and two to add to the district's system development capital reserve fund for the future system, system expansion and improvement of the existing system? This sum is to come from the fiscal year twenty-twenty slash twenty-twenty-one unassigned fund balance. These are the system development charges collected during the twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty budget year.
Yeah, I see that. Right, so the, the amount is two hundred thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three. Uh, and I just wanted to clarify something, is this from fiscal year twenty dash twenty-one? It's not twenty-two, it's not twenty-one dash twenty-two, cause that's not closed yet, right? Okay. Okay, great. Um, there any other questions on article six? Seeing none, we'll move to, uh, read article seven, and, uh, John again?
Shall the Merrimack Village District vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred thousand dollars under provisions of RSA thirty-five colon one, comma, one, and two to add to the district's equipment and facilities capital reserve fund for associated costs with existing storage, transmission, and production of water? This sum, uh, to come from unassigned fund balance.
Great. Any questions on article seven? Seeing none, uh, that completes the seven warrant articles for uh, the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three fiscal year. Uh, are there any questions from the public? Seeing none? Uh, asking for any questions from the press? Uh, seeing no further questions, I declare this public hearing closed. The board of commissioners will, uh, reopen the session of the Merrimack Village District Board of Commissioners meeting upon conclusion of all public hearings for this evening. Um, so, I don't think we need to speak to the budget or anything, um, nobody has any questions, so. I believe at this time, are we voting to move these warrant articles to the ballot? To the, um, what's the correct wording? To the annual meeting? As printed, so I, I think we could do all of these warrant articles in one motion, if I'm not mistaken. So if somebody wants to make a motion to move, uh, articles one through seven, uh, for the warrant articles to the annual meeting? Uh, I will entertain a motion. Motion by Paul? Wait, here a second by John? Um, anybody have any discussion questions? Seeing none, we'll take a official vote, all those in favor of moving the warrant articles to the annual meeting? Signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. And that passes four-zero-zero. Uh, and I did wanna mention that, uh, Wolf Von Sean had to, um, it was excused from this public hearing as he's out of state. So we have, uh, the remaining four commissioners here voting in favor, four-zero-zero. Um, so. There's nothing else to, uh, discuss? Have any questions, Michelle, or anything?
Does the budget have to be voted to? You provide the. So the detail, the summary budget that we provide goes along with that?
Good point, so basically because the, one of the warrant articles is the budget, then we don't have to vote separately to move the budget separately. Um. So, if we're not missing anything else, then I guess we can have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn by John?
Second.
Second by Paul, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
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 That passes four-zero-zero. Thanks for, uh, Merrimack TV for recording this, and, uh, we'll catch you at the next one. Thank you.